All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is the East Aurora Union Free School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, March 1st, 2023. Please join me in the pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indomitable, will not be in justice for all.
May I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss the employment history of four particular employees, matters related to pending litigation, and matters related to a particular student? By Mr. Cassidy? Second. Seconded by Mrs. Oweiler. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tungened. Scary tungened here. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. We are returning from the second session where we discussed the employment history of four particular employees, matters related to pending litigation, and matters related to a particular student. Any more discussion items at this point?
No.
Superintendent's comments? Oh, no items required. We're actually there.
No.
No.
First, I'd like to turn it over to our clerk, Beth Casey, who has an announcement.
We have two board members, Jessica Armbrust and Daniel Brunson, whose three-year terms are expiring June 30th, 2023. We have one board member, Paul Blowers, whose one-year term expires June 30th, 2023. These three seats will be filled at the May 16th, 2023 election. The three candidates who received the highest number of votes will each be elected to serve a three-year term, but beginning on July 1st and expiring on June 30th, 2026. Nominating petitions can be available from Sue Kramer in the superintendent's office beginning on March 2nd, 2023, requiring 70 signatures, and are due back in the office or no later than Monday, April 17th, by 5:00 p.m. Information is also available for prospective board members on the district website, on the Board of Education page. Your county association of school boards is holding a prospective school board member workshop, tentatively scheduled to take place on Saturday, March 25th. A link to registration information can be found on the district website, on the Board of Education page.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I would just like to wish our boys' basketball team well. They are playing right now in the semifinals, Buffalo State against Chicago Central. I was trying to sneak out to get to the game, but then I wouldn't be here. And so sometimes I have to make difficult choices. What we wish them the best, Mr. Robertson, are they representing the district? So we're wishing them the very best. And that's it.
Buffalo State is a big basketball school. When I was there, Randy Smith was there when I was there. That was a while ago.
Moving on to item six, board presidents and board member comments and committee reports. I do not have anything to say.
Yes, I do. First of all, I wanted to see, I can see we have a lot of seniors here. I just wanted to say to anyone who was involved with the recent musical, incredible job that was done by everyone from the cast group. So thank you very much for three very entertaining evenings. Other thing I wanted to mention was safety meeting. We met on February 10th. Mr. Brunson and I represented the board, and Utica National told us again, for the 10th year in a row, we have received the Titanium With Honors, Utica National School Safety Excellence Awards. Altaris, who is currently doing a kind of like an audit of our safety in the buildings, hopefully we'll be hearing back from them soon as far as I can hear back. Wellness Day is going to be March 17th. I do last year, you know, last year we were invited to attend, and Mark is shaking his head, so we will be this year. During this year's Wellness Day, they're going to be offering three sessions on CPR training, which brings me to the ethics. They are looking at CPR training and AED placements. We have them in the buildings, but there's the thought that we need to increase signage for them. We watched a clip from Real Sports, January 23 episode, if anyone Brian Gumbel is familiar with that. I highly would recommend you looking at that. You hear so much about school shooting these days. We don't really hear much about student athletes who have sudden cardiac arrest on the field. And every year, there are over 100 students who die from sudden cardiac arrest. And again, we don't hear about that. So with that being said, we had the discussion about purchasing more AEDs, more signage, more CPR training, et cetera, et cetera. But this all raised me to the fact that I was very disturbed to hear, as was Mr. Brunson, something that I did not know when I lived right outside the village. But our village slash town does not have an ambulance that is permanently housed at the fire department. So if one of our student athletes has a cardiac arrest on the field, it could take up to, they said, 19 minutes for some, for an ambulance to get to our students. Again, that was nothing that I was aware of. I knew Dan was, and most people in the room were not aware that that was the case. And that's something that I think that we need to be looking into because, Lord forbid, that happens to one of our student athletes.
What is the closest?
We share with Holland and where else? Where else do we share?
Anything else?
Yeah, we share with Holland.
So it could be anywhere.
Right.
Right. And even the police department, they were pretty upset and bothered by this because they had incidences where we've needed an ambulance, and the ambulance has not been there in the time that it should be there. And my concern is that we have, we will have a student, and we are not going to have the ambulance there to give that student the necessary support.
Or we could have any, any member of our staff or visitor or whatever.
Right, exactly. Could be anybody.
Well, anyone in the village or anyone in the whole town, for that matter. It's particularly distressing because I recall at a time, a time when we did not have this kind of service, and when a great deal of discussion occurred within the community about the need for it, and a decision was made to employ a contractor who would provide 24/7 ambulance service in the village. And when that happened, I breathed a sigh of relief, and I thought, ah, they've addressed an important issue. They're spending our tax money on something that's very much needed. But somehow or another, as time went by, this changed, and I don't recall it ever being brought to the attention of the community. Now, maybe it was, and I missed it, but I don't miss much. And it's distressing to find out that they now have, they don't, they aren't required to maintain 24/7. They just have to have an ambulance somewhere in Western New York that they can send to us when we have a call. So, you know, and I was, I always thought the only time that that would happen would be if our ambulance was out on call. So the one that was supposed to be 24/7 in East Aurora had to go to the nursing home, for instance, and take someone to the hospital. Well, then you can understand, they have to bring something in from West Seneca or from somewhere else. It's going to take a long time. But now we're finding out, no, that's not the case. It could very well be that the only ambulance available is from 20 minutes away or 30 minutes away, and that there was, there. So I'm distressed with our community leaders who made this decision to allow the contract to be changed, and to do it in a way that the community was not aware. Now, if Terry and I are not aware of it, and I don't know whether any of you folks were, I mean, let me ask you, is there anyone on this board who knew that we did not have this? So tell, tell us about how that decision was made. Were you part of?
I didn't raise my hand. I didn't raise my hand to say I was a subject matter expert. I raised my hand that I was aware of it.
You were aware of it. So how did you learn about it?
From attending village board meetings and from reading about it in the advertiser. And it was, my recollection of it was, you're right, it was a contract change that the ambulance company had. And I don't know that it was a, again, this was a couple of years ago, I think. It wasn't something that, I don't think we had a whole lot of options on. And I don't think it was a decision by the local leadership to, you know, to diminish our coverage at all. In fact, they've made changes in conjunction with the fire department. They've, rather than retire vehicle, they've made that a response vehicle so that the trained personnel who are, who are local, who can get to their, and get to respond in instances where it will be a fluid response from the areas, have, have, have the means to get there and have the equipment. Granted, they're not going to be able to address all situations, but my understanding is that the village has been taking steps to try to fill in those gaps and do what they can with the, we'll say, car.
Well, all I can tell you is that the first responders who are on the safety committee for the school district are distressed about this, all of them. And so it seems to me that whatever is being done is not enough.
It's, yeah. It's a, it's a constant conversation.
Thank you for bringing it up. I would, I would suggest this is one to take to the village board to find out more because this is, obviously impacts our students and our staff, but it's the entire community and not our decision to make, but certainly ours to be aware of and to have a voice. Does that make sense? Just we all pay attention so we know how we're protecting our, our school community. Just highlights, again, what you're talking about for Wellness Day and taking those CPR classes and the AED classes and getting as many people as possible.
There'll be three sessions, so that's great.
Thank you.
You'll need to be able to get a professional medical person to the scene quickly. And what it can take, I was down here in the cafeteria about a year ago, or maybe two years ago, when, when it took 30, 40 minutes for a person, for the ambulance to respond to a person who collapsed at an Action Club dinner, you know? And it was distressing. Fortunately, there were a couple of nurses who were there, who were just parents who were in the audience, but it's, it's distressing. And if I missed seeing it in the advertiser, I guess I'm not reading it at the advertiser closely enough to catch the fine print.
And thank you for me?
To follow through with the CPR such, I thought I learned last night that, that the three towns or villages contract with AMR, and that they have to, they're supposed to be able to respond within 15 minutes, and if they can't, then that's when it takes longer to send from another town, obviously, could be anywhere. So as far as the CPR goes, I have been talking with different administration, and we are definitely, we're going forward with some sort of community course, community class that we'll have a lot more information on next week, next meeting, so in a couple of weeks, but we are going forward with that to reach out to the community as well as, and have some of our students who are already certified and such help with that as well.
Great, outside of Wellness Day.
Outside of Wellness Day, this will be something for the entire school community and outside community as well.
So I wanted to echo Mrs. Oweiler's comments about the musical. We got the chance to go, and it was fantastic. It was one that I wasn't familiar with, and so that was kind of fun. A week and a half ago, I attended the reception at the Roycroft for the Athletics Hall of Fame and got to hear the induction speeches and the speeches by the inductees. And it was great. It was a great experience to get there and hear from these folks who have left the district, to hear their, you know, their accomplishments when they were within the district and what it has meant to them ever since. So it was, it was a really, it was a really nice opportunity to get and hear that. And then, and I'll only touch on it briefly because I'm sure Mr. Pantoja will mention it, but I got to listen to a cool new podcast, and I learned, I learned about Mrs. Pantoja, I learned about Mrs. Hayes, I learned about sloths, and I learned about cruise ships. And if you get the chance, I would say, please take, take the link that was in the newsletter that went out a week and a half ago, and Mr. Duff's podcast, my podcast club, the link to their, their first episode is in there, and it's, it's really enjoyable.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Ms. Flowers?
Yeah, can't beat that, especially at a slop fire. Who knows that, three, two?
Not the subject matter expert.
We did well on the ambulance. The budget and finance committee met on February 13th. Mrs. Daniel, Mr. Brunson, as well as the superintendent and business administrator attended the meeting. We reviewed the 22, or 23, 24 salary and benefit estimates. We compare that information to actual expenses and estimated expenses for fiscal years 21, 22, and 23. We also reviewed estimated 23, 24 revenue expenses in totality and got our first look at a potential budget gap. I think some of that will be discussed tonight. The committee also discussed options for moving grant salaries into the general fund in fiscal years 23, 24, and 25, which is the last year of the COVID relief grants. The committee also reviewed both these budget information for several years, including past actual expenditures and estimated future expenditures. It was a productive meeting, and the information supplied by the superintendent and business administrator was extremely helpful and will help us move forward in the budget process. You'll see their hard work here tonight, too. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Flowers. Ms. Brunson? Nothing tonight. I'll say that. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to community comments. Our administrators. Sorry, folks. Hello. What's it got tonight? See, I just had a sense. Ms. Pantoja?
I can start. I have wonderful news about our podcast club. That was our first episode that you listened to, but there were two more after that, and the kids had a wonderful time with Mr. Duff, and they're just coming along so well. Our first actual club at Parkdale, and what a success it was for the kids, for families to hear their children, and we're looking forward to more experiences and additional clubs for next semester. A great big shout out to our teachers. They did a wonderful job. We did the data review that Mr. Brown talked about in our last session, and they really went by kid, kid by kid and gave excellent strategies and looked at progress, and we really are moving along. And last, but not least, if you haven't already done so, please put down March 16th on your calendar. It's our steam night. We have a wonderful program for the community, and we're looking forward to some awesome demonstrations and presentations. It's going to be great, so.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this evening?
Pre-K registration closed, and we have, for the pre-K registration for the lottery closed, and we have 81 families that have put in for the lottery. Very good news. Keeps going up. Keeps going up.
I'm sorry, how many spots do we have?
Well.
What did we have this past year?
72.
72, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
But there's additional grant funding for next school year.
So we have enough slots potentially next year to cover everyone, I guess?
Thank you very much. Anyone else this evening? Thank you all for being here. Moving on to community comments. Do you have any cards this evening? No? All right. We all received an email from Kenneth Suddles about the Western New York literacy incident. If you all would do that. Moving on to item 10, reports and discussion items. Item A, Ms. George with the business office.
Yes, our financial reports today go through the end of January. At the end of January, everything was in balance. Once again, that's good news. We had $16.7 million in the bank, which ties to our cash flow. We had expended approximately 49% of our budget and received 78% of our revenues. Again, on the cafeteria side, revenues are outpacing expenditures by about $62,000. And as always, I caution about the timing of, of when things are recorded. Federal funds are coming in well. The treasurer has done the drawdowns as we can, and money keeps coming in. It's good.
And I'll point out, now that we're meeting twice a month for the next couple of months, we're only going to do the grid once a month, but there's nothing to worry about, but we'll see what happens through the grid.
Any questions for, questions for Ms. George? All right, thank you. Moving on to item B, district values and visions. Vision, vision, one vision.
Oh, we're waiting for that. I do want to say, I don't know if anyone has noticed the, in, that's the right word, in the amount of stuff that's been put out on our website.
Yes.
From technology and, well done, and it's, it's something that stood out to me, and others have mentioned that as well, how, how nice that is to see and.
You can, you can find everything now?
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely been filmed.
We're going to reboot this guy. Sure. Ready?
So, yeah, so tonight, we're going to go through the, our values and visions. This has been a kind of a work in progress over the last couple of years, so a lot related to COVID, quite honestly. So when we met with the group just a month or so ago, we said, let's look at the new normal, we can step back so we can move forward. So just. Oh, am I hitting the wrong button?
Going down.
So high. Yeah. Okay.
There we go.
Yeah, so, you know, we're all familiar with this, this is probably on eight or 10 years. We started off kind of reformatting our goals and objectives. Mr. Van Austrian, at the time, took all the information that the committee put together and created this rose for us, which is representative of our community. The four pedals represent our values, leading excellence, respectful relations, relationships, effective communication, continuous improvement. It was a driving force behind the all of our decision making, all the decision making of our budget is really driven by, by these concepts, and it's really focused on the well-being of our students and our staff. Yeah, so when we met with the committee, we looked at the last two and a half years of all the challenges and struggles growth and the opportunities that we've had, and we asked four questions of the committee this year to kind of get us refocused. What do we need to start doing? What do we need to stop doing? What do we keep doing? And what do we need to get back to doing? And so we had a really good conversation, but I'll be honest, like, you know, the conversation wasn't easy. You know, there's a lot of challenges that we've been facing, a lot of dialogue and discussion around that, but in the end, I think there was also a sense of hope and, like I said, opportunity for the future. So I thought the conversation was very worthwhile. There we go. There it is. So we look at academics, and some of the things that popped up, what we did is we kind of brainstormed around each one of these topics and took all of their ideas and then kind of pulled the information together for our focus. And so along academics, we talked about the role of grading. We were working on grading for, gosh, at least a year and a half to two years prior to the pandemic, something that's really important in terms of efficiency, in terms of continuity, of philosophy across grading, especially at the middle school and high school. And so again, we said, let's get back to doing that. Let's get back to the committee. Let's look at equity and grading to make sure that we're treating the kids as early as we possibly can. The importance of instructional technology. I guess we went through COVID, we've seen the growth of the use of technology within the classroom has really been exponential, both on the student side, but even more so, I'd see it on the teacher's side. So that was also a major focus. Non-traditional teaching and learning opportunities, everything that arose from the last two and a half years, things that we never thought we could do, that really had been advantageous that we kept around because they worked well. Pretty sure any gaps are covered. Yeah, so we noticed too, that is, as, you know, we, what we noticed in the data is that the cumulative effect is, is more significant than we originally thought. There are greater gaps in learning, there are greater needs for our students, and so we're addressing that as well. Looking at the community is rebuild a committee structure for various initiatives, again, giving us to refocus on things that we had started, that we had to kind of put on the back burner, but we feel that are really necessary and helpful in terms of us moving forward in a positive way. And then really define like the good and find ways to connect to the larger community. And so again, these are driven by the ideas of the teachers and the members of the committee. In terms of, an aspect of it focuses on the intersection of SEL, DEI, RPN, holistic wellness for students, staff, and community, what those stand for, social, emotional learning, diversity, equity, inclusion, kind of a story of practices, and how those, those three things and the overall holistic wellness all relate and interact and support one another by creating a strong program around these concepts, and then creating a community that supports all people, all learners, all humans, all adults. And so that's really our focus in terms of those aspects of it. And then overall, don't waste a once in a century a learning opportunity to explore. Like you said, the process has been really difficult. As I said, numerous challenges for all of us, our, our board, our administrators, our teachers, our students, their families, but there's also great opportunities here to move forward, and so that's kind of what we discussed. And then we said, so then we said, really considering moving forward, how do we go about this process again, now that we've had some time to sit down and talk it through, operate new life into it, you know, what do we hope for here? We said considering moving to a calendar process like January through December, and like in the spring, doing the goal setting and the prep work, then hearing it through, supporting it through PD, capacity building. Over the summer, then implementation in the fall, and then evaluation and new goal setting in the spring again. And so the idea that we would be presenting like, hopefully sometime in the earlier fall like we used to, where there was like, we're starting off the school year, this is what we've worked on over the last six to nine months, this is what our goals are for this upcoming school year. So that's what really, really, what we're trying to get back to is that hopefully we'll meet the spring, we'll meet again in the early fall, hopefully at the end of September, and then in October, November, we will be presenting this, which includes how we've made some progress with the different, the DEI, those types of things, some of the academic goals that we have. We have some new things on the horizon. We've had an audit in special education that will come on, you know, to our values and vision for the next couple of school years. So just how that unfolds, really want to try to tighten up the process and do it in kind of a consistent basis like we did three or four years ago, and just be able to kind of start off the school year on that positive note with that direction in place. And that's kind of it for today. So is there any questions or any thoughts or?
Just, you referenced stakeholders, just generally, who are the stakeholders that are involved in this?
Yeah, we try to draw from, from everybody who's within the organization. So it's, it's support staff, clerical, buildings and grounds, teachers, administrators. So let's see, who else? Anyone? I think that's pretty much it. We've gathered from hundreds of the organization so that they all have a voice.
Great. Thank you.
I put in grade, you know, it was a discussion for years and it was a grading committee, I think, established a while ago. Where has that gone so far and where is it now?
Yeah, we are making some good progress. And so what came of that? We have the after-school programs that we talked about grading and equity and completion of assignments. So then we created the after-school opportunities for students to catch up on their work. So, you know, they wouldn't receive a zero for an assignment. They would be assigned after-school activity and then they would get that opportunity to complete their work and hand it in for a grade. And so we examined the process of grading, like is there consistency across like grade level, exam material, those kinds of things. And then fortunately, like with COVID, they pumped the brakes. And so now we have a couple of members of our team attending some grading training on the 17th of March. And that's kind of like, kind of be the restart, working possibly with a consultant, bringing that person in, bringing the committee back together and then continuing that work. So we're, we're ready to go. It'll probably, it'll probably ease through the spring and we'll start hitting hard in the fall.
Are you on that committee or?
Yeah, I am on the committee. Yes, I am.
Just, we, I met today with the principals about the grading committee. Yep. We have a plan to get a little subcommittee of teachers together in, in April to restart the bigger committee, to get their feedback, to restart the bigger committee come September. But we have a plan that I'll go over with you tomorrow.
We've got a wide range of ideas and thoughts about that. Within faculty itself, and then you get the committee. So you hash all that kind of stuff out, is it?
Yeah. Grading is a very personal thing for teachers. And so it's a topic that we have to be respectful and cautious when we think about it because we don't want anyone to feel that, you know, that they're not grading appropriately. The idea of consistency, looking at the area of practice in terms of how do we create grades, creating system for our students that is equitable and that is respectful of their efforts. What is the purpose of grading? What does grading mean? Grading is, is supposed to give us feedback on data. So just understanding that and then the idea of certain concepts around like the issues of grading with zeros and how that impacts the student's grade and the complexity of how that, when a zero is given. So those are the kinds of things we that are not easy, but I think we're really
We've got more reports on that as time goes by and stuff. It's an interesting one.
And it's a we're actually going to Dunkirk to see the
You mean on the 17th?
Yes.
It's in Goanda, Tom Guskey does a lot of research and literature around the grading and how a zero not only affects a student's grade, but their motivation in general in the long run. So the principals and I think Cindy are going. It happens to be well in this day, so we have to divide and conquer.
It's also St. Patrick's.
It's also St. Patrick's Day.
See that that was on this for, for 2023 because I think consistency across all teachers at all levels needs to be, for everyone is missing in that field. So those zeros, everyone understands that a zero is, as you said, not just affecting someone academically, but also emotionally. And with COVID, we got all the teachers, we have a lot of new teachers that are here. So it puts everyone on the exact same page.
As the spring goes forward and such, and you start hashing out the specifics of these, kind of like you're talking about with the grading, but for the other things, is that something that comes back to us to, to see as well? Like what specifically does, you know, place priority on team building mean? Like how, like what are the specifics beyond, I just grabbed that out of there, but a lot of these?
Yeah, so what will happen is as we work through these, these processes and projects, what you'll see is, you know, like the progression development that we're doing to provide to support those things within the organization. So everything around like, for instance, restorative practices, we're working with a consultant outside of the Pats team just to go through the process. Right, and so that'll all be coming through our conversations, you know, at each of the board meetings.
Other questions?
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. It's nice to see us getting back. Moving on to I don't see, they're too comfy. The draft 23 to 24 district budget.
Sorry, no, it's good. So here's the agenda for our budget tonight. Not a lot of changes, like, you know, we're going every two weeks, so there's not a lot of new information that's coming in. But Joanne does get some information. We try to tighten things up as much as we possibly can. I work with the administrators to again tighten like what we're looking for for personnel additions. And, and so that's a big budget impact. So here's all the things that we're going to cover in the slideshow tonight. Again, here's values and vision. Just talked about what it looks like for this year. This is really the driving force behind our decision. It's really focused on learning excellence, respectful relationships, communication and continuous improvement. And again, really focused on our, our wellbeing of our students and our staff is our primary focus. So the budget finance committee has continued to meet and they're doing a great job. It really helps us to kind of hash through a few things that are kind of up in the air in between our board meetings, which helps us to prepare our presentation in a better and thorough way. And so the last time we met was February 13th. We have a meeting on Monday, March 6th for preparation. We have some good news here. So Joanne's office has been working really diligently to get the $437,000 reimbursed. Hasn't been easy, but you can see the, the three highlighted numbers, the $97,000, the $39,000, the $111,000 are all on their way, along with the $48,000, the $707,000. So the one thing that's kind of hanging out there is the distribution of the old cost of $140,000. We continue to work with Senator Schumer and some of the congressmen to, to give that reimbursement. So we're really hopeful that that $140,000 will be coming to us. But we're pretty much guaranteed that the other four categories will be either, either here or on their way. So reserve funding, again, we got to kind of keep this one out there and just keep it thinking about like if we have additional funding left over at the end of the year, where do we want to place it? In what reserves? This isn't the only answer, but here's some of the thoughts that we had. If we look at ERS and TRS, it's to, to fund or use or both. So we may use some of it and we can fund it depending on how things work. Again, those are help to, to bring the budget into balance. That's the purpose of reserves is to kind of save in these different areas. So then we have monies to draw on when, when budgets get tight. Same thing for if we look at technology, again, using 2024 for some of the expenses around the replacement of some hardware, Chromebooks and those types of things, repair reserve and the same thing for the capital reserve. We know we're going to use the capital reserve as part of the upcoming project, so that will be definitely a drawdown. But then we want to place money back in if it is advantageous to do so. Government aid run again, there's not much new information here. The one, the two areas that we're focused on are the high cost and private access cost aids. Because we really think they're going to come in higher than this, which is, which is really good news. We really card in Mrs. Marinaccio's office to, to it's high reimbursements in these two categories possible. The state uses a kind of an unusual formula that doesn't, is usually very accurate for some reason. We're not exactly sure why that works. So in this case, we're really hoping that those two aid categories come in significantly higher than, than they're projecting right now.
And Mr. Ross, if I could just comment, the UPK grant along the bottom, although we are allocated almost $600,000 as Mrs. Marinaccio pointed out today, we did not get the enrollment to actually use all of that money. So that money will be lowered based on student count.
Are we intending to have five UPK classes in the fall?
Yes.
So we, we have the possibility of, of up to 90 students.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that the cutoff number? We need 90?
That's the maximum for five.
That would be the maximum that we could have with five classes because What was the cutoff to get this full on?
Well, is there enough for a sixth class if we actually had a big influx of, of students?
Yeah, so if we had a large influx.
It's 5,400 per pupil. So if we have 81 pupils enrolled, our grant that we would get is 81 times 5,400. If we open five classes, we'll have nine spots because we could enroll 90 students. So we won't get the funding for those nine spots if the nine students don't enroll, but we still have the expense of the full class.
Well, that's why I asked if we intend to do five class. So because you said it was a lottery and of course it is a lottery, but we don't intend at this point in time to only run four classes, do we?
I believe we're planning on, or starting five classes since we have the funding for it and we have some students.
So we won't, we'll, so we could end up possibly in a deficit situation on this because the, the enrollment will not be the full 18 in each of those five classes, which means the total cost of operating them could be more than we're receiving as, as a revenue. Is that correct?
So basically we'd be running instead of 18, we'd be running 16 in each class, basically speaking. So we're not getting the full aid.
So you're coming up $10,000 short in each class.
Right, so it's about $10,000 for a classroom.
But the good news is they don't actually take the count of students until March 15th. Like for this year's funding, we haven't even submitted yet the count of students. So that gives you time to fill those spots as more
So there might be people move into the district over the summer. They could still enroll in UPK, up to nine additional slots.
And we also have our preschool integrated class. So that 81 doesn't include the number of students that we have for that, which I'm not quite sure of the number yet, but I, it's around four or up to five, I think we had on here. So those students, we would get the preschool grant money and we would get the money for the integrated program. So
Sure.
Which is, is actually fairly significant. So, so we went with, remember we talked about trying to create an integrated program for our preschool. So there, there are very few integrated programs, but Mrs. Marinaccio and I were really, we, we really wanted to give it a try, right? We want to be able to provide special ed services right within, right within the classroom. Unfortunately, there was this crazy grant that they just didn't fill out. We said we couldn't do it. We didn't have enough time to meet the deadline. So they actually sent somebody to help us to do it. So then we were granted this, this specialized program. And so it's really great for our students, but what we've also found out is the funding is really very advantageous to the district as well. And so that should be coming to us this year. A very positive thing on both sides. We're one of the very few integrated programs, I think.
Yeah, most school districts.
In that area, maybe most. Yeah, so here we go, some budget priorities. And so again, this is pretty similar to what we've seen in the past. Some of the things that are highlighted are those things that are still not in the budget. You know, are still working on them as, as we go through the process. Not much of Parkdale again, looking for really a half AIS person for some additional support and a building sub. When we talked about the building subs at the last meeting, it's one of the areas that we think we're going to have to cut back on. But we're hopeful that we might be able to keep one on, if we're district one or two, depending on how the final numbers work out. Middle school, again, there's, there's not much here besides the, the building sub. Just some things that are neutral, some equipment transfer, which is going to be transferred from contractual. The five, six assignments at sixth grade, again, that's going to be neutral. We may add some clubs at the middle school, which we're excited for. A lot of super, super level of participation at both the middle and at the high school in terms of our extracurricular, and these are clubs really well, well intended. Yeah, so we're very excited about that.
Can I excuse me for interrupting you, but I just wanted to be sure I understand what we're looking at these numbers are additions in order to accomplish the priority and that they're already in your draft budget that we're seeing tonight?
Yes. So I missed one highlight, the building level sub for the middle school is not in the budget. So anything bolded is not in the current budget. Anything not bolded is in the, tonight's presentation. And I just missed that one, I apologize.
For instance, the Parkdale sub is not in the budget.
Correct, it is not.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yeah, and so, yeah, so you can see all the bold, I see highlighted, my apologies. Bold items are not yet, yet in the budget, but we're still working through that process. Like because if we look at technology, the Chromebook replacements for fifth and ninth grade, you know, we're going to maybe draw that from the temp reserve, right? And so the money is in the reserve for that reason. So that's what we think we're going to get the funds for, but we're just waiting to see how things unfold over the next couple of years. Personnel, again, there's, there's a few things in the personnel office, this small dollar amounts, $5,000 for conferences and materials and supplies. At the high school, you can see, and there's some small adjustments in FTEs in world languages. Ock and tech increases, you can see in general. General, materials and supplies to run our new programs is definitely considerably more expensive. The materials that they need and the volume of work that they're doing. So the materials and supplies costs with some of our new technology programs have definitely increased. And so we need to address those. But again, you can see here that those are still on the list, but not currently in the budget.
Is there a reason why the, the middle school building sub is in the budget, but the other two are not?
I made a mistake. I forgot to bold it.
Can I suggest we might just pull the document without watching the presentation? Could we indicate, yeah, bold items are not included in the budget.
Okay, and then we look at athletics. We talked about AEDs. So we talked about like 22 AEDs in terms to like kind of separate. So that's also in there, about $1,000 apiece. Along with that, we go training, you know, we want to train our, want to train our staff, we want to train our students to be aware of where they are, bringing signage and attention to those things. I mean, yeah, so we watch some, we listen to a lot of videos and see some information on the importance of having them. And even more than having them, the awareness, you know, the awareness of where to get them and how to utilize them. Official contracts, these are things that we just need to address. One big thing is the trainer cost. It's an additional $30,000 because we were fortunate over the last several years to, first of all, our costs were locked in with our provider. And also then we're receiving a grant to cover some of the expenses to promote athletic training use for students. Those have all, the, the cost from our provider has gone up and the grant has expired. So we're looking at an increase of $30,000 in, in expense for our trainer. But, you know, we really believe it's well worth it. We have a trainer readily available. Maybe we don't need to have someone around as often, but we have found it really advantageous for our kids and for athletes. So, yeah, so that, and so we talked a little bit about, do we bring the trainer on board? What's the, what's the offsetting expense to actually have him as an employee? Benefits, all those types of things. So we're going to be looking at not for this year, but for next school year. Modified lacrosse and indoor track, again, those are hopefully going to be funded, but haven't been put into the budget at this point in time. Lacrosse equipment, we need new goals.
You should note there, under the AEDs, and last night in my course again, that, that those last for 10 years.
And that's the one thing we were thinking about, so we was maybe buying 10 for this year and then 10 next year just to separate them so the un-replacing costs, you're not replacing the entire And we have AEDs right now. They're relatively plentiful and it's initial 20 kind of puts us at the next level, which is not necessary. Not necessary, but we feel it's important. So I think if we split it between 10 and 10, it will make sense over the next two school years.
I know when we were on the safety committee, that was one of our discussions, getting all the AEDs and we had those. I think when we spoke on the safety committee that at that time, we purchased AEDs. They were staggered and we have, how many do we have right now? I thought we had
Do you know offhand?
I don't know.
About a dozen.
Not 12?
Throughout the buildings plus
Yeah, those are, that includes portable ones.
Right, so I'm just wondering if we're talking about maybe splitting this and staggering it, if it's something worthwhile to look into possibly a grant for AEDs? Because it seems like there's, some of those things are available. So maybe if we're doing it this year, the $10,000, is that something that's a possibility of looking at grants?
Sure.
For something like that?
So there has to be enough so that there can be one close at hand for every sporting event.
Right, and the 20 would get us there.
Unfortunately, one of the things we learned in the safety meeting was we can't have one housed the athletic fields of the high school permanently because of the cold weather.
Right, so. The thought process with these additional twenty would be that every single coach per season has it in their to-go bag, their medical bag, so it's in the office, warm. But when they go out to a field or wherever, it's right in that bag.
Isn't, up at the high school fields, the new building has bathrooms.
There must be some heat.
I thought that it was, that little section was heated all the time. Otherwise, how would you, what do they do, drain all those lines?
So the annex is, in fact, heated all the time. One of the things that we were looking at is to save on utilities because nobody's in it. What we experienced just recently was a pipe burst up in the ceiling. Went down, got on the smoke detector, fire and police responded. My question was, well, why, nobody's using it, why don't, why don't we shut it down for the season? So that's something that we are going to look at in the future. And that was hence why we were looking at the AEDs being portable and not actually installed there permanently. Again, current state, it is heated all year round and to work on.
So we could have had an AED up there, up until today.
Yes, half of it is, half of it is heated, the storage is not heated, it's unconditional.
Yeah, I knew there had to be a portion because there's water running through there for sinks in the kitchen and in the bathrooms. So, you know, I mean, there's going to be a job to drain all those lines and can deal with whatever you have to deal with to shut it down. But I understand trying to save money for utilities. But I thought it was designed in such a way that it was a very limited amount of heat necessary to protect it. But apparently, it didn't work because if the pipe broke, there you go. So whatever you can do to help us out.
It was a try.
The other part of that is that the installed ones are basically just the portable ones in a box. So we have talked about, you can leave it up there three of the four seasons. No one uses the stadium in the winter anyways, and the restrooms and the rest of the lot.
Oh, just take it in.
So literally, we just have to remember when we start shutting down the stadium, just take it out, keep it in the school where athletic events are. And then in the spring, we just have to put it back. But the wall ones are just the portable ones sitting in a box.
Well, whatever.
Nine months of the year, ten months of the year.
Just trying to make sure that you don't, I mean, we, they showed us a video at this last safety committee meeting of these folks trying to get an AED when a youngster had collapsed at an athletic event and how these poor young kids who were sent to hunt for an AED just were desperately trying to get into the building and they were trying to get around, not in our district, but it just showed that it's an area that has to be fixed. You know, we just have to have one handy. You know, when you send, you send a field trip out, you hand them a first aid kit that they take with them for every field trip. And they take it with them on the bus and it's there, there should be an AED in that.
There will be.
Yeah, yeah.
So those AEDs will be. Okay, so looking at special education. Again, these clerical pieces are work in progress based on the audit that we're going through right now. What do we really need, what do we need to shift around to make that happen? We can look at 2.0 FTEs to create two Phase One classrooms. These will be offset by expenses that we're incurring from both these programs that we have our students in currently. So we're bringing kids back into the district, which is really great. That we want at Parkdale and one at the middle school, so we're excited about that. And then we talked a little bit about the increase in referrals to special education over the last six months. So we can see some escalating costs in those areas. But those have been talked through by Mrs. Marinaggio and Mrs. George, and they've worked it into the budget. And these are their approximate costs right now. But we'll see that unfold as the CSE process, annual review, go through over the next couple of months. And we'll see where that goes. District, again, TOSA adjustments. Again, we're not exactly sure. We have some people and teachers on special assignment in certain administrative roles. We have a number of TOSs in various roles, but we have two that are in administrative roles right now that we're looking at. We have a couple that, one's working in technology, one's working curriculum. But there's two that are assisting in the administrative ranks. And so we're going to talk about that in greater detail moving forward. We made some adjustments to the nurses' salaries. We had discussion about the difficulty of having, finding nurses. And so we had two nurses, one who left to go back to school and one who retired. So that left us two positions that were open. We only had one candidate.
And then since making the adjustment, we've had nine candidates.
That's great.
My rock and I are going to go through the process of interviewing, so mission accomplished on that one.
So we had one and they were, they were in LPN, not even in RN. So really something that we really just went on our ends and so it's really hard to come by. So Mr. Marinaggio did some research, found out the going rate in other districts. We used that as a starting rate, so we needed to adjust our current nurses to make up for that. And that was that $45,000 adjustment. Also, not only for our current nurses, but for our nurses going forward. So that $45,000 encompasses all of that. ECL, DEI, sort of practice coordinator, again, that's a work in progress. Where hopefully we'll have something more definitive by the next board meeting. Again, we're doing a lot of great work. We've gone through some excellent professional development. Mrs. Marinaggio, Ms. Lyons, a bunch of administrators, the principals have been working with our teachers and support staff to get through that process. But there's no question, if we want that to take hold, we need somebody, some assistant director to kind of oversee that process and make sure that it's comprehensive and it's thoroughly vetted. And not only that, thoroughly implemented K through 12. Portable stage, again, because we've been doing our graduation outdoors. And so we realized if we're going to continue to do that, the, our students seem to really like having the graduation outdoors. Their parents have been very excited about that as well. So we really need a stage that will support the process. And so that'll be $18,000, so we're excited about that. And then we got one through nine charter school placement that I don't really know what that is, but it's part of our process.
We have, we've never had a person go to a charter school. If they live in our district and they go to a charter school, we have to pay. So we do this year and they're in ninth grade. So it'll be, it's something new to the budget that I have to budget for, for the next four years anyways.
It's a real bargain.
Yeah, it is.
The portable stage, if this budget passes, is that something you would have for this graduating?
We would have the portable stage for this, this year, Mr. George, right? That would be something for next year.
That would be for next year. And that's because it's equipment money and that's special money. And we don't have the money in this year's budget.
So buildings and grounds, again, we're going to replace a tractor or truck. We're working on that process. Again, that's budget neutral because there were some exchanges within the wish to make that happen. You know, Mr. Rislaf and Mrs. George and I are going to sit down and kind of look at like our replacement. We'll talk with Lisa Lee to see what we can do to turn that around at a reasonable replacement cycle because we have some vehicles that are ten, fifteen, twenty years old. And they're pretty, they're pretty beat up, so we need to keep that in mind.
But these budget neutral lines, I assume that means that the amount that you budgeted for that priority is offset by an equal reduction in some other line? You have the idea, so.
Sometimes, yes. For the truck, how many years ago was it? Maybe three years ago, we started reintroducing equipment lines. So we keep that equipment line flat so that we can keep replacing a truck each year.
So, okay, so what you're saying is that you budgeted X dollars last year for equipment. So now, since you're getting more new equipment, but you're still budgeting the same X.
Same X.
That was there in the past.
That's why it's budget neutral.
So it's actually not offset by some other line?
No.
It's just that.
It's just not an increase to the budget. It's budget neutral. Sometimes it is offset, sometimes it's not.
The special ed is offset. Okay, so we're spending tuition dollars to send students to specialized programs. We're going to pull that money back and the money that we'll spend will be offset by that savings.
It's just on a different line.
Yes, exactly.
So whereas what Joanne was just talking about is the fact that it was the same line.
And it's just that we're continuing with our purchasing of trucks.
Well, that's right.
Or tractors, or whatever the priority is in any given year.
It's the concept that once something gets in the budget, it's stuck in there. You know, if you're going to buy a, I don't know, whatever, a kazoo. You know, you buy this thing and you think, well, that we have it, right? So next year, we shouldn't have to spend that particular amount because we already have a kazoo. The, but in this case, I can understand it because obviously you have a list of vehicles that need replacing, so.
Yeah, equipment in the district has really been hit hard over the gap elimination years. And just trying to get back to a level playing field has been a challenge.
It's more.
Is on the budget for, every year we looked at it and said, well, no, not this year. No, not this year.
Well, yeah, because, that's right. So once you get it in the budget, it's sort of in there, you know. It's more of a concern on the salary lines, frankly, you know. Because you, if you're adding salary, adding staff, like you're doing with the special ed, the 1-8-1 classes, it's a significant additional cost for salaries. And you're, I just want to be sure that the reduction in both these line is substantially equivalent to the amount that you're increasing this other line.
In general, it is, yeah.
To, and just, I'm sorry, just to Mr. Ruston's point, you know, the things that are budget neutral that are coming from a different line, is there, or just budget neutral in general, is there a way for us to show that detail in these presentations? So people have an understanding that, yes, there are, you know, there are, there are things that are coming off, but they're being replaced with these necessary items to provide a little more.
I can try to think of a way to do that, but sometimes I think less is more. And it gets more confusing when you try to do that. Kind of like I had the Xs in there and now we took the Xs out. Now I have the bolding in there, now we have to. So there's always somebody who's not going to understand what we're trying to.
Well, I think we should just point it out. Whenever we have a budget neutral comment here, we should simply say, that's because we've reduced this line to compensate for it.
I think it's, we should always feel free to ask the question if we're not sure what the description means. We certainly need to ask it. I think for folks looking at it in general, I don't know, the labors and I would think budget neutral means it's not going to impact my tax dollars and what all is in there, what's coming, what's going. I think it's our job to make sure we understand what's baked in. That's what maybe folks can ask if they have questions. I don't know, I don't know that other folks will need to know how it's budget neutral, just that it is budget neutral. Does that make sense?
I guess from my perspective, the reason I say this is because we see things added on. Always see the positive numbers, the add-ons to the budget. We never, we never have a conversation about what may be coming off of the budget. So the perception that we're only adding. And that would be a way to at least show where that neutral is coming from. It's, you know, in the, you know, anybody who would open this up on our website, they would have no idea that we're, you know, that it might be coming off the budget.
So could we add a slide that explains what's baked into budget neutral? So that folks understand that some of this is a reduction.
We're down to try to think of a way to do it.
Yeah, and I, so I think you, Mr. Gassidy, I understand what you're saying now. And that's a very valid point that we're talking a lot about what we're spending, not where we've stopped spending.
Yes, so my, that slide one's kind of an easier example.
Yep.
We have seven out of district placements, the cost is X, $300,000. Expenditure for the new hires is X, which is $300,000. To explain that is a little complicated, but the idea, the concept behind it, that there's some kind of offsetting, offsetting savings by moving in this direction, which causes it to be budget neutral. So we're not spending money in other areas, or we're spending less money in other areas, that's what it is.
Right.
I see what you're saying. How do you explain that, Russ?
We're spending less money in other areas.
Right, the reason it's budget neutral is because there's other areas of, other places we're spending costs. So we're shifting money.
Another word that goes with it, so you got budget neutral. You've also got tax levy neutral. Because you could appropriate fund balance for the equipment, for example, and it keeps the tax levy neutral. You could also make some of the repairs from the building grounds department and put that toward the reserve, the repair reserve. Which, again, the money's already there and would affect the levy because it's neutral. Two good things working here, the budget neutral, which we talked about and requested sort of information. The other is we have resources on hand to cover the costs. Time appropriate fund balance toward one-time purchases. Like equipment is a good thing, short-term and long-term finances, so. Those are kind of, like Joanne said, it's kind of hard to put out and explain, but some things are one for one, for example.
Some things aren't.
Yeah, right.
You can put toward appropriate fund balance, but if you're substituting equipment for this year into next year's budget, yeah, worthwhile information, again, that's budget neutral, tax neutral.
Maybe what we'll do is we'll try to come up with just, like you were saying, bold elements are not.
Mr. Ruston, please pause for one moment and let the seniors go home so they can get all their homework done.
Unless you want to stick.
Did they text you, Terry?
They were all looking at each other because they tend to go.
Yeah, and so 1.0 cleaner, again, what we've noticed is, well, we've had just a few issues in the cleaning of people finding and leaving the district. And also the idea of adding the new pre-k classrooms. Those are all additional places that need a lot of cleaning, I'll be quite honest. And to make sure that they're in good order. But there's just other areas of Parkdale that need additional assistance. So we definitely need that additional cleaner.
Those are some of the hardest working people we have in the district. And they're unsung heroes. They work behind the scenes, they work the second shift when there's not so many people around. And they, and it's very hard work. So they deserve a pat on the back and they deserve whatever consideration we can give them at, when we consider their salaries.
And so here we are, so we're going to look again at the stimulus funding positions. You know, like what do we, what do we fund through stimulus? And again, most of this is focused around intervention services. Mental health and counseling, some AIS work. You can see the majority of it, literary specialists, social workers. AIS in math and in language arts, behavioral specialists, all of those. The family support center, all of that was in response to our students' needs. Their social, emotional wellbeing, supports for their families. And also this impacts their ability in the classroom as well.
So are you about to leave that slide?
No, go ahead, yeah.
I, I'm just trying to get into my head how many of these stimulus-funded positions we are preparing to fund through the regular budget? Because the stimulus funding ends in '23, '24. And so we can continue to pay some of these positions through, through the stimulus. But in '24, '25, we will have no stimulus funding. And so is this a list of all the stimulus-funded positions?
Yes.
Okay, and so some of them are scheduled to go into the budget for this coming year? Nine of them for this coming year, the '23, '24 budget. And then the rest of them would have to be, if we want to retain them. And then the rest of them would have to be, if we want to retain them, would have to be in the '24, '25 budget? Thank you.
Joanne, is there someone you could let us know which one, which nine?
I think the building level subs are the three that were not currently in the budget.
So my understanding is that Ms. George has been working on getting us to transition off the stimulus funds without falling off a cliff and losing the services that we've been providing to our students.
Well, I think that's a really important point, and what's gonna happen, the way it's set up, is we, there will be money in the general fund budget. We'll still pay them out of the grant, but it's gonna start building the budget for the next, for the next few years. So when we move those positions over, they're already in the budget. So what's gonna happen at the end of '23, '24, is fund balance is gonna be quite strong.
Correct.
And we'll have some things to deal, not to deal with, but some decisions to make at that point.
Right.
So they'll come up as budget neutral?
Right. Theoretically, theoretically, that description is correct. We're going in any unforeseen conditions, you know, that we have to pull that money for.
That's true, with the offset of a budget on the revenue side, with these in the budget with the idea we're not going to use those dollars in the general fund. As far as the point is, we move forward, as you understand it, during this year, how the budget, the fund balance, it's gonna be strong. I mean, the amount of salaries we move over, because we don't have any plans to charge it, to charge off those. Do we, do we stack the, some of these services that are being paid out of the grants?
Can't, out of the grant.
It makes sense you can't.
When they come into the general fund, yes, we can.
In the total sense. The nurses, though, we do stack some of their services?
Yes.
Are they eligible?
Yes.
Some of the nurses, um.
So when we, would we apply and get reimbursed in excess cost date areas? So when we hire nurses and, and, or we just establish whatever we're going to do, some of that's gonna come back in the form of excess cost.
Right.
True or not true?
True. Nurses are a little trickier. So if it's a one-to-one nurse, absolutely, but when they're building level nurses, not so much.
Okay. I wasn't aware of how that worked, there's, I just couldn't remember.
Yeah, yeah, but other things, when they're in the general fund, absolutely, social workers, psychs, those types of things, yes, are calculated into the costs so that we can stack it back.
The stacking is that, that excess cost date that we talked about earlier on, the formula that the state uses is always very accurate, but that stacking is what makes that number, like, the more we stack and the more we, we put in for reimbursement, the higher numbers those have been. So Erin Jameson, who's been working since she turned special assignment, has been focusing on that, has found some new avenues for reimbursement that are really advantageous.
Got it. Thank you.
So it's a good thing.
Not nurses, though, right, because we don't have a one-to-one nurse.
Right. I was gonna say, nurses are in staff.
We stacked at Iroquois for a nurse.
Okay.
I get my districts mixed up.
Like, if we have.
If it's a one-to-one nurse.
A nurse on a bus, sir.
A nurse on a bus, we have.
That can be stacked, but not the nurse's salary itself, like.
Not the general, but those nurses who are providing a direct service to a child.
Right, which we had at Iroquois, at my previous district. We had a child who had a nurse with him or her the whole time they were in school. We could stack for that nurse, one-to-one.
And we can claim Medicaid for nursing services also, if it's a student with a disability with Medicaid eligibility. So there's other.
Different rules for different funding sources.
And not if they're in, not if they're in the grant, if they're in the general fund.
Not in the grant, though, you can't double dip.
Yeah, right, it seems reasonable, you can't, you can't. So, so here's our appropriations, again, some, some movement in BOCs, I guess that's the movement. It's changed, we, we continue to see some savings in our BOCs as we continue to go through the evaluation process of the services that we need. So we're looking at almost a quarter of a million dollar reduction, and we're actually thinking that that may grow over the next three, three to four weeks.
I have two weeks. I have two weeks to get that done. I tried to get it done by Monday.
Yeah, I don't mean it may grow, may actually, the, the savings may grow, and, yeah, maybe a bigger savings.
And just if we could pause here, Beth is gonna pass out some things when we get to the discussion piece that Mr. Blowers had asked that I bring for the whole board, that'll relate to these slides.
So here we are on the revenue slide, again, not a lot of changes since the last time that we've been through this. So again, you can see there's a little difference that shows, shows the gap between appropriations and the revenue. It's about $340,000. Again, we're really hopeful that over the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to tighten up and close that gap. We'll get more information about that excess cost date and those types of things, and that will help us to strengthen the gap in addition to addressing some of the items that have not been included in the budget, right? So it's not only addressing this immediate gap, but also some of the items that we would like to add into the budget that we haven't done so yet. So the proposed capital outlay, again, it's gonna be a part deal, and it's gonna focus on the system. Again, we've been doing that across the district, so we're gonna move the system to what they call VoIP network. And again, if there's anything left over, then we're gonna look at the camera systems, replacement of some concrete, asphalt work, and lawn restoration. Really hopeful that the, we know we've been talking about this since last year, the movement from $100,000 to $250,000. So the one thing that we will have to decide on, if they do move to $250,000, do we move there immediately and add $150,000, like, through some kind of excess appropriation? Or do we take it in stages of $75,000 this year and then go off to the next year? One nice thing about the capital outlay is the aid comes back to us immediately. So it's, it's a funding source that, once it's established, the aid's coming back to support the project the next year. And so it's a, it's a way to get something done, especially if it goes to, like, from $100,000 to a quarter million dollars, we actually can do considerably more work, because then there's a, a better proportion between the cost of the, of the services of our architects to the overall project, right? So it's, so, yeah, so it's, we're hopeful. So tax levy limit calculation, I'll turn it over to Joanne.
Yep, it's just a formula, as we've gone over. Does anybody have any questions? I, I say the same thing every, every.
This hasn't changed at all?
No, it hasn't changed at all. It's just a formula, it's a calculation.
And this assumes that the cap would be 3.08?
3.13.
0.13, oh, you read the wrong column, sorry. 3.13.
This is about $750,000.
Yes, thank you, that's, that's the important piece. So here's the tax rate. Joanne, any other comments at all, or?
No, this is assuming that all the, what are they called, assessments stay the same, which we know they don't. So this is the worst-case scenario. Right now, I haven't gotten the rest of the information that comes in August. So it's just using our current year numbers and adding this tax levy into it, and what it could look like as an estimate.
Here it is, again, fiscal accountability, continue to be lower than the average generic county, and considerably lower in comparison to all schools across New York State. And here it is, we are March 1st, hard to believe, halfway through the school year. And so we'll have an update at that time. So any other questions?
Mr. Russell, in the next presentation, would you want to add that slide in about what the proposed tax cap impact is on each household?
Yeah.
What, what their value, how it's valued at $100,000. Any questions or comments for Mr. Russell? Ms. George?
Just, just one on the page, the reserve funding page. There's a question I brought up the last meeting about legal fees, the cost of the district. Would it, be to our advantage, at least under projected column, to, we might want to consider something in the liability reserve of excess fund balance, or is that something we have no interest in at this point? I don't know. It's, I mean, it was something we could talk about. It's not, nothing we deal with now, anyway. It's gonna be, it's summer, early fall when a decision's made.
Can we just put a note in it, to fund, our funded '23, you know, we can just.
It's an option. We may not, board may not want to go that way, but.
You know, that's the whole idea of why we put this slide up, speaking of that conversation.
Yep.
Very good budget, like, even from the state, they say, you know, keep your reserve funding processed available to the board, so that you can make adjustments along the way. So we'll, we'll do that.
That seems like a wise one.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Russell, Ms. George?
Only if there's anything when Ms. Casey passes us out, just in case, Paul, that would be a good, for conversation.
We gotta do an hour and a half on this. Maybe somebody just wanted to look over.
I have to read the whole, right, and these are draft copies, because they're working papers, they're draft copies.
That sounds like a great idea.
Is there any immediate questions? Why don't you take a look at this, and we can make this a topic for discussion on the fifth meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Give you a chance to digest it, yeah.
It's, the one thing I did note, just from our, the page with our projected '23, '24 tax rate, it's interesting to see, and I just don't remember from the, the increase in the total parcel that's gone up.
Right, and.
Twenty, twenty parcels from.
Yep, and if you look at our tax cap calculation, if you go to that slide, where it says tax base growth factor, where it's over a one, that's what is indicative of that. Is that we're getting more assessed value, we're getting more properties.
That's a change.
Well, and it's, the, the big factor, in my view, is the rate. It's what, it's the bill that a person receives for their taxes. The, the levy can vary based on need for the district. And, for instance, if, if you have a great influx of students into your district, you may simply have to increase the levy in order to accommodate those. And that's, that happened in districts like Lancaster, where they were building and building and building, and there were more and more students coming in. They had no choice but to increase the levy. But that doesn't necessarily mean that the tax, the individual taxpayer's bill is gonna go up. You know, because there can be offsetting revenue sources, such as additional taxable land or additional taxable businesses that, that are in the community. So, so in, in my view, and it's, it's very hard, you can't really predict the rate, because you don't know yet what the, what.
Equalization rates are, what assessed value is.
But I, but I, the, the, but the big number that sticks in people's minds, the average taxpayer, not the one who pours over all the details in the advertiser, but, but, but the average taxpayer just simply wants to know, is my bill gonna be higher next year, or is it gonna be the same? And if it's gonna be higher, how much higher is it gonna be? And so the, you know, and we went to them, what, five, six years ago, and we asked them for 6% or more than that. And the community rallied to our need at that time, and said, yes, you know, we don't have these extra resources at that time for, to be able to tax these additional parcels, because it wasn't happening. But they, they came through and they agreed to it. And I still remember at that time, our, as a board, and not everyone around this table was on the board at that time, but a lot of us were, and, and I remember saying, now we, we owe our, our constituents. And we're gonna, we're gonna moderate this increase as time goes by. And you can see it on this page, whatever number, it doesn't have a page, tax levy limit calculation page. The, the, you know, it was, in, in 1819, it was 5.49, and then in 1920, it was 4.45. And then, for some reason, we got off track and we went back up again in 2021.
I can show you again, right here.
Well, but let me just finish my point.
This to this?
Yeah, the, 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 the point I'm making is that, is that we're progressively working towards to be in the twos. You know, and you can see that we've got down here 2.62 for '24, '25. But I can show you slides from two, three years ago, where we're projected to be in the twos by now, you know? And so, so I, I see that it was 3.08 last year, and now it's 3.13, and that doesn't mean much, that little bit of an increase. But it, but I would like to see it continue to go down to meet the promise that we made to the taxpayers, that, that we appreciated the 6% or 7% that they gave us several years ago. We're still collecting that money, by the way. When, when you raise the levy by 6% or 7%, it's not just for one year. That, that additional levy is there for year after year after year.
The cap held as well.
Yeah, exactly. So, so the, you know, I, I don't think because the calculation ends up 3.13, that that's what we should necessarily do. Yes, we're allowed to do 3.13 based on the, the calculation. But I, but I think the, we should have a policy of working this number down into the twos, and now I'll stop.
To your point, Dan, our projection from last year's budget that I just pulled out, we had projected '23, '24, our percent increase to be 2.59.
Exactly, exactly, but, but, yeah, that was my point. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's hard to project that, but I don't think it should prevent us from keep trying to achieve it. I think that's, I appreciate you bringing that up.
And it's, thank you, and it's not, it's not, it's not undoable, because, you know, 3.08 to 3.13 isn't all that much. So it could, it could go from 3.08 to 2.99, and then the following year, the 2.62. I, it's, you know, I, I understand that you can't necessarily, because I guarantee you next year that that won't be 2.62, even though it says it is there. So, so I, I understand that, that there are needs, and, and I don't advocate for cutting the budget to do this, you know? I don't, I'm not advocating going in there and slashing some position that we, we're doing, or some piece of equipment we're buying. I think we have enough flexibility in this budget, based on the plans for the, for the unappropriated fund balance moving forward, and based upon the, our plans for, for increasing our various reserves, that, that maybe we could adjust this slightly without affecting the program or the employees, and at the same time, begin to, to fulfill our commitment to the taxpayer.
Can I add to that?
Yeah.
I agree with everything you said. When you look at the tax cap calculation, the two lines that are gonna dictate quite a bit, regardless of what the increased estimates are, is we just talked about the tax, tax base growth factor, factor, that calculation up at the top. If you go down where the capital exclusion is, as you can see, you've got a calculation, you've got the tax levy limit before the exclusion in '22, '23. $23,798, you have $1,554, and that brings it to '25, 353. That's a key addition, especially as we move forward with the capital private and stuff. And the local share becomes a little bit higher, the exclusion goes up, and it's gonna put more and more pressure on getting into the threes, and the tax rate will be very difficult to stay in the twos because of that addition of the capital exclusion.
I understand. I also understand, Paul, that we, that when the community voted for this bond issue that we just approved, that they, that we told them it was gonna be a 1% increase.
That's the number right there that's gonna.
Yeah, on the taxes. So when that comes in, but that's not here yet, you know? So when that comes in, I won't, I won't argue about a 1% increase, because they approved it and we, and we told them that that was. But for this budget and the next one, that's not there yet.
I want this year's budget to be the same way, the two somewhere.
So, wait.
No, I was gonna wrap up, so go ahead and do that.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause, well, you know, it, I think, like, the board members understand that, like, making these projections is just that, right? There's so many factors that are, that are put into those numbers, that makes it really difficult to accurately project what those are gonna look like. So, like, the factors that happen throughout the year, you know, adjust that number. And so, you know, I, I agree, there's definitely a balance between, you know, making sure that we have money to support programming now, but also down the road. And so anytime we make adjustments, you know, we, we have to realize that that adjustment is permanent, either to the good or to the, to the bad. So it's either a gain in money or a loss, permanently moving forward. So we have to keep that in mind as we make those adjustments. But I think we're really close, like, 3.13, we're really close to getting into, into the twos. And I know that was, that was our goal, you know, like, my gosh, and Dan, I think. And I know that was, that was our goal, you know, like, gosh, and Dan, I think that's how many years ago is it now? It's, it's a lot.
Well, it is.
It's been 70 years.
Most people won't even remember it.
Right, right.
But I remember it.
But I remember too, right? Exactly.
Lots of other things I forget, but I somehow or another have that stuck in my mind.
So we can talk about that as, as things tighten up and we see, you know, a clearer picture. And again, just keeping all that in mind, that those decisions are, are for now and for the long term.
I, I understand that. You, you know Rick Timms, right? Well, he would, he would refer to what I'm suggesting as leaving money on the table, which in my view is in, is, is translated to tax them as high as you're allowed, no matter what.
The challenge is always that it's the, it's the, we have, we have to take care of our school community and the community at large. And when the times are tough, you better hope that you were smart and you built the reserves, right? And, and the districts that did better during gap elimination times were those who had socked the money away when they could get their hands on it. Those who were more conservative didn't have the reserves to get through. That's part of the challenge, right? You, you don't know what's coming down the pike, and you have to be prepared for it as much as possible without doing damage to anyone.
There's no doubt about it. And more than one comptroller's audit, with, by the way, we're going to have a comptroller's audit in this coming year. But more than one audit, if you read them, they come out regularly, more than one have very sternly told the Board of Education and the district being audited that they are overtaxing their community, that they are, that they are increasing their fund balances beyond what's permitted by law. They are sucking away additional monies that did not need to be taxed in the year in which they were, it was taxed. And so it's, it's a slap on the wrist because the comptroller can't do anything other than write his opinion in the, in the audit. But, but I, I think, I take that opinion seriously, you know? And we've been audited any number of times, and they've never accused us of that. So, so the, I think I'm kind of proud of that, that we, you know, we have, we've been frugal. And, and you see it in the, in your chart about how much we do in per pupil spending. You know, we're a frugal district. We, but what comes along with that is, is remembering our values. And, and there are the values of the school district that you talk about in your values and vision, but, and then there are the values of the community as well. And, and we tend to have a reasonably frugal community, which, and it has some diversity. Diversity in our community is economic diversity. So there's a lot of people where a hundred dollar increase in their school taxes is a lot of money for them. And there are other people where it's, it doesn't matter to them. So I think we're, we're responsible for all those people.
I agree. Yeah. I'd like to add, just about with the superintendent side, about a 3.13%. And it's not that far away from getting into the twos, but it's farther than you think. If you take a look at, and this is just the initial draft of the budget, there's more work to do, between the estimated revenues for next year, the change in revenues using 3.13 compared to the change in the previous year. Firstly, you have the $340,000 to close the gap. Then you can start dealing with that 3.13. So you've got a lot of, you know, a lot of changes to make in the revenue preparation side in order to get the start of massaging at 3.13, getting down to two, so it's bigger than.
It's not a rounding error.
Yes.
Oh, and it may not be able to be done. You know, I'm not saying I won't support 3.13. I, you know, we, we just have to, we have to sharpen our pencils and do our homework and make sure that, that what we're, what we're spending needs to be spent, and what we are, and that our revenue projections are as accurate as we can get. And then we need to ask ourselves, since we already know there's going to be a significant balance at the end of the year, a positive fund balance, is all of that money necessary?
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. All right, moving on to item D, the capital facility project. Five minutes.
Here's a, there's a long-term plan that our architects put together that we thought we would share with you to, tonight, just to keep you kind of up to date. Again, we're having some really good productive meetings, but it is the initial stages, there's a lot to come. And so there's a number of board members who sit on this facilities committee, and I suppose it's all right to kind of give us a report, and then the other members, please, you know, if you'd like to chime in as well. But again, just working with new architects, the engineers, we met with some of their subcontractors, which have been very productive meetings, and I think we're, we're moving forward nicely. We have a number of meetings that are scheduled over the next several weeks. Again, that will move us forward, and I think these are relatively on track. So, this is all right.
I'll just go through a couple of things. Before I actually go into the capital facilities project, just so you all know, that we had a leak and drain in the basement of the middle school, which damaged the floor. And this line is going to be scoped at the same time that we're scoping the high school's drainage. So hopefully they'll be able to figure that out. I think it may be caused by a roof drainage issue with a pipe through the side wall where the louvers won't spark. But when they scope that, they'll be able to give us that information. Just so you are aware, that we have a new Buffalo Construction Project Director, and his name is Joe Aramakmini. He's next to Steve Deckard, he'll still be around, but Joe is going to be the one who's currently assigned to this project. SED's wait time has now increased, it's now 12 to 14 weeks per review, and they are thinking that that's actually going to be even longer because there are many retirements at SED. We are in queue and under review for the high school gym exterior doors and one set of the Parkdale doors. Phase one will be submitted in June for SED review. The target date for bid is still December 2023, with starting construction in 2024. In phase two, we're hoping to submit that to SED in May of 2024. Our architects have begun fieldwork, and they are doing the initial design meetings for the middle school toilet rooms and for the classrooms. And I just wanted to point out on this chart that you're, you received, you can see it says 2005 on the right-hand column, just so you are aware.
Page 25?
2025, yeah, in the right-hand column, just so you are aware, that they, these are future projects in maintenance items that were prioritized. Their items were discussed or not selected for this project. So you'll see there's a separate column. Some of these may end up going toward an alternative, an alternate, depending upon the cost, et cetera. But don't be confused when you see the 2025 column. If you just want to prioritize, it may be on the next project, or may be an alternate. The one thing that we really need to start thinking about is our long-term plan for UPK. We need to start thinking about having a plan in place. We discussed setting up a subcommittee and/or scheduling future meetings to review the current needs and the plan for the future needs. We can talk about the facility, having at least one board member on some of those subcommittees. But if the, if they mandate that three PK, three-year-olds can now go on UPK, we don't have the facilities for that. There's going to be a lot of issues. So we need to start thinking and planning now, in case that happens. And we know we're at 81, but if, I mean, we're stretching right now for space at Parkdale. So we need to start definitely thinking and planning. And then again, this chart that we received, you can see the, the capital outlay projects for 2020, starting at 21 to 22 to 23. You can kind of see, it goes through and explains what is being done in each, in each building. So I thought this was something that would be very important for everyone to have, so you can kind of see the breakdown of where it is and what the cost is and what is exactly being done. And our intent is to put a capital facilities update on the agenda for the meeting, now that we're really, now that the budget's passed, and then we're starting to get into these meetings and the development of it. Any questions?
The capital outlay project is listed as incidentals only, or am I reading this wrong?
Right, so, yes, because that's for 23, 24, that's because the cost hasn't been, that's the incidentals, like the cost for the phones has not been determined yet. And as Brian showed us in the budget product, or the budget presentation, we talked about having potentially the sidewalks being done, some UPK storage, et cetera.
Gotcha. We're doing the high school phones or the, what, what's this?
That's right now.
Right now.
This year, next year is Parkdale.
That's for 23.
2023, we've got it. Thank you.
Yeah, just, just, I'll, I'll just make one more comment in the UPK. Again, like, right now, like, I thought that maybe around 95 sections would be, like, kind of our limit, because again, we look at just incoming kindergarteners, what the class sizes will play.
95.
Yeah, yeah, 95.
Yeah, you said connection.
Okay. I'm sorry. Sorry. 95 sections of pre-K. We're going to pull ours. Sorry. 95, yeah, soon, soon, excuse me. And so that would be like five full sections of, of pre-K and for the four-year-olds. And so we need five rooms. So now it's coming in a little lighter, which, you know, if we look at like the number of incoming kindergarteners, you know, like 120-ish, 130, you know, sometimes a little less, you know, a percentage of those kids aren't going to come for a variety of reasons, right? So there is a sweet spot for us. We're probably close to what that is. But if we, if they provide us with opportunities for a three-year-old program, which is, there's discussion around that at the federal level, you know, to provide that, that opportunity in all the school districts across the country, it may become a reality, there's no question we're going to have to do something about that. In order to host a pre-K, we would need to do some type of building, you know, facilities project just around the, to accommodate the needs of those students. Because again, three-year-olds even need, like, additional resources that four-year-olds don't need, or five-year-olds need, right? Because when they're three, they're super low, right? And they need a lot of support, and, and so creating a, an appropriate pre-K program would really have to come through a separate facilities project, just to, just to keep that in mind, because that could come sooner than later.
Unless we contracted with agencies that already are expert at dealing with three-year-olds, which is another option.
Yeah, sure. And we always put that out, you know, and we continue, every year, we put it out forward to, to, to partner with, with people in our, agencies in our community. Unfortunately, it hasn't worked, but fortunately, too, it's good that they're here.
Yeah, but it might work for the three-year-olds.
Yes, it may. Yeah. So just to, to keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for keeping it on the agenda going forward. I think that's a very good plan to keep it top of mind while we're working through the budget and everything else. All right, is there any legislation to be considered for it? Moving on to item 12, may have, is there anyone who wishes to remove this consensus item from the consent agenda? And may I have a motion to approve?
Move.
Move by Mr. Blowers. Sure. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, carried 7-0. Item 13, item requiring board action. Item A, the superintendent recommends that the board of education issue a second reading to adopt the policies collectively known as the new section 3000, so planning the current section 3000 in the meeting. I have a motion. I move, move by Mrs. O'Leiler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion? Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, carried 7-0. Item B, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education perform a second reading to remove the entirety of the remaining current 3000 section of the current policy manual as detailed in your agenda. By Mrs. Daniel?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, carried 7-0. Item C, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education perform a second reading to adopt the policies collectively known as the new section 4000, so planning the current section 4000 of the existing policy manual.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Cassidy. Second. Seconded by Mrs. Daniel. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, carried 7-0. Item D, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education perform a second reading to retire the entirety of the current section 4000 of the current policy manual as detailed in your agenda. Moved by Mrs. Daniel?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion? Thank you very much, much committee and Mr. Mabredy for keeping us moving. It's so delightful to see so much progress this year. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, carried 7-0. Item E, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the contract between Young and Wright and the school district for the services performed for the 2022 capital improvements project as detailed in your agenda. Moved by Mrs. O'Leiler.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Daniel. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, carried 7-0. Item F, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education nominate David Lowery to appear as a candidate on the Erie Two Chautauqua Cataragus Bozey's Board Member Election as detailed in your attachments.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Cassidy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Blowers. Discussion? I thank Mr. Lowery for providing us all with a letter that I'm sure you all received. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, carried 7-0. Item G, please, let's see, may I have a motion to approve the Fourth Amendment to the Contract of Employment for the Superintendent of Schools as detailed in your attachment? Moved by Mrs. O'Leiler. Second? Seconded by Mrs. Daniel. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, carried 7-0. Item H, the superintendent recommends Board of Education approve the memorandum of agreement between the school district and the faculty association as detailed in your attachment. I have a motion. Moved by Mr. Cassidy. Seconded by Mrs. O'Leiler. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, carried 7-0. Okay, bear with me, folks, I'm going to read the whole thing.
The whole thing?
Apparently.
Oh, I don't think you'd have.
What, just the bold part? That's.
Yeah, the bold part, that's good.
That'll work.
Item I, may I have a motion to approve a bond resolution dated March 1st, 2023 of the Board of Education of the East Aurora Union Free School District, Erie County, New York. The district authorizing the district, one, to undertake an approved capital improvement project 2022, the project consisting of the partial reconstruction and renovation of, and the construction of improvements and upgrades to various district buildings and facilities and the sites thereof, at an estimated maximum cost of $22,300,000. Two, to expend or apply toward the project during the current fiscal year of the district, $1,784,589 from the district's capital improvements reserve fund, 2019. And three, to issue serial bonds or other obligations of the district in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $20,515,411 to finance the balance of the estimated maximum cost of the project, and delegating the power to issue bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the sale of such obligations to the President of the Board of Education of the district.
Move.
Moved by Mr. Blowers.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Superintendent, will you call a vote? Does she have an order, or can I just go around the table? Mr. Brunson?
Aye.
Mrs. Katie?
Aye.
Jess Armbrust, I'm an aye.
Mrs. O'Leiler, aye.[1753.41]